Twenty-one, City of Broussard's special meeting. Please silence your cell phones and if anyone from the audience would like to comment on an item listed on the agenda, please fill out a blue card located at the back of the room and turn it into our city clerk. Each speaker will be given a maximum of five minutes. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. The United States of America, in due part, a country of saints, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Garrett, would you lead us in prayer?
We, the members of the Broussard City Council, beg of thee, O mighty God, to enlighten our minds so that our work will be just and fair in all things. Give us the courage and strength to fulfill our duties according to the laws of the land and fulfilling also thy holy will on earth and in heaven through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Welcome everyone. Tonight, the only thing on our agenda is to interview two interim police chief candidates. So first up, we'd like to welcome Lieutenant Vance Olivier with the Lafayette City Police Department. Vance, please, if you would. Welcome and if you'd please introduce yourself to the council.
My name is Vance Olivier. I'm currently with the Lafayette Police Department. I've been with them for twenty-five years, been in law enforcement for over thirty years. Born and raised in Lafayette, so I'm fairly new to the community of Broussard. I've been here about seven years so far. I started my career with the Lafayette Parish Sheriff's Department, did like five and a half years, full-time, five and a half years. Prior to that was a reserve time. And then I went on to the Lafayette Police Department from ninety-five until present. Currently, I'm lieutenant in charge of the Criminal Investigative Division. And I had the opportunity to work through several divisions throughout my years with the police department. I guess I was with the Terlins High School. I grew up there. I'm one of seven siblings, kind of going backwards, but I'm one of seven siblings. And like I said, I'd had the opportunity to attend S L C C and the L S U E at one point in my career. I am a graduate of Terlins, eighty-four. I wish it was ninety-four.
Vance, could you describe for us why you're interested in the interim police chief position in Broussard?
Sure. I feel that my years in law enforcement, it gives me a great opportunity to come to the city of Broussard, be a great experience for me, a great challenge for me at this point in my career. And I feel that experience that I can bring, I'll help and move the department forward from this point on. I feel that I'll be able to lead the leaders of the community in which I live in, in my family. And like I said, I hadn't been here real long, but seven years. And I think at this point, I would like to be part of this community and part of police in this community and providing police, professional police services to the citizens of Broussard.
Could you describe some improvements you think you might be able to make within our police force or what you'd like to see as a leader describing a police force that community-based, those sorts of things?
Well, I think I would like to I'd like to get with the community leaders. That would probably be the, one of the first things on the agenda after I met with staff and meet with them and see what their needs are and see what the communities' needs are. And that way, we could put together a team, a community team, and maybe get out into the neighborhoods and walk the neighborhoods and see what are some of the issues they're having and address those issues.
On a daily basis, how many individuals do you manage?
Probably about like close to sixty, because I have property persons, it's divided up in different, so property persons. At one time, I was supervising S R O, our school resource officers as well, crime scene, and our special investigative unit as well.
How many years have you managed that many people, you would say?
This is, well, probably two so far, that amount of people. Because I just made it to the rank of lieutenant. My first rank of lieutenant, I was a watch commander, which is, we, on the night shift. So the daily operations, we made sure that, you know, make sure staffing was appropriate, make sure that any calls for service were getting taken care of. Any major incidents were ran through me. And I made the calls to heaven, needed to call whether it's detectives or made the decision. Then I moved on to, they called it a swing lieutenant, so I was actually on the streets. So my responsibility was staffing as well and responding to all major incidents within the city limits of Lafayette.
As a police lieutenant, can you describe for us some of the challenges that police personnel face every day and what you might be able to do to help our officers overcome some of those daily challenges?
Yeah, I think one of the, one of the major issues that challenges, sometimes the officers are not heard. You know, throughout my career, I was probably one of those guys on the bottom, and you feel like sometimes you're not heard. I think it's important and it's imperative upon us to sit down with each officer's, you know, at some point. And I try to do it with my supervisor and see, what are the challenges you facing as far as on a daily basis? And I think that we got to provide them with, with all the resources available. I think that's very important. You want, all the technology, the newest technology, make their job a lot easier. So I think anything you can do to make their job easier, I think is a plus.
What can you bring in the community for the youth?
Well, I'd like to maybe have a sponsorship, maybe get with them and maybe even have a mentoring program where we can go out there and mentor. Some of the officers will get out there and mentor the children, you know, mentor the kids, whether it's baseball, boys in club, or whatever activities that they have that we can be there for them.
For sixty minutes, you talked about earlier, what kind of leadership style do you have that you, that you see successful for yourself?
I think I lead by example. I think that I am, I have empathy and I can sympathize with some of the officers' needs and on the daily basis, what they go through, because I've been there. I've been in the trenches just like they have, and I've worked alongside them. And I don't believe that we are any greater than, as a supervisor, I've helped out on scenes. I think it's important that you listen to them and see what their needs are, like I said earlier. So I think that's a big part of leadership, is understanding what their needs and their wants are and trying to help them accomplish that, whether it's material, whether it's psychological, they need, you know, assistance or anything that they may have witnessed or gone through, because it's, we do see a lot of stuff out there and it bears on you, you know, and I understand that, as being in this line of work with the years that I've been there.
Do you think policing needs to be micromanaged?
Well, absolutely not. I think you need to have open communication with the council, open communication with your leaders in the community, and open communications with, you know, anybody that wants to be heard. I think that we work for the people, right? I mean, we work for, we at their dispensary, we work for them. We want to make sure that they get professional police services on a daily basis, and that's what I'm hoping to provide.
In your career, have you had to deal with the public directly, any public relations?
I did. I was a public information officer for a little while, so I had the opportunity to deal with some of the media outlets. And I mean, on a daily, I really, up until the point of the career where you start getting to the upper management, which where I'm at right now, you have limited contact with the public, but we still, you know, throughout my career, that's all I really dealt with, you know, on a daily basis. I was a K nine for like thirteen years, recruiting for two years, so I had the opportunity of recruiting new officers into the department. So that gave me the opportunity to get out there and meet with the public, go to public speakings, colleges and universities and try to recruit and retain.
In your twenty-five years, have you always been civil service?
I have.
So you're, you're well-versed in civil service?
For the most part. I, I haven't gotten any kind of trouble where I'd need civil service, but I mean, for the most part, yeah, I know how the workings of it. I need to educate myself more on it, but be, you know, be accepted as the interim chief, of course. You want to always know everything you can about it.
Have you ever been involved in a budget at any level?
At this, yeah, now I have been. Since I made the rank of lieutenant, we just started in the city of Lafayette. You've really known in the lower ranks, you know, really dealing with our day-to-day budget. But we've had, I've had the opportunity of looking, going over it and seeing what items we need and just kind of getting introduced to it.
Now, that would include capital expenditures, capital expenses?
Yeah, I'm learning. It, it's first time, really. Like I said, the upper management, usually the way we have our structure is like our majors over each section, they pretty much control the budget, but I'm having the opportunity right now to do that and assist with that.
What is the city of Lafayette's police budget, you know, what the numbers are? I'm just rough numbers?
I think, don't quote me, but I thought it was like twenty-eight billion, might be more than that.
What do you do in your free time?
I like to spend time with my family, work out, run, and it's kind of pretty much it, you know. Not a whole lot of hobbies, no golf, no fish, just like hanging out with them, really. I got two older daughters and try to spend as much time as I can with them.
Vance, could, could you describe some professional accomplishments that you're particularly proud of?
Oh, I think one of the things, and I think I told y'all, or I spoke with some of you that well in there. I think one of the biggest professional accomplishments is that one was in recruiting and the other was when I was field training officer. There's nothing better than going out there and having a young officer come to you and teach you and mentor him. And then you see them throughout their career advance and then they get picked for specialized services or specialized division. So it's kind of a proud moment, you know, you take them under your wing and then you mold them and they get to the point where they're doing a great job and moved up. So that's a pretty, pretty exciting thing in your career.
Do we have any other questions? Kenny? Okay, if there's no other questions for Mr. Olivier, Lieutenant Olivier, we do have a blue card, someone would like to speak. It looks like they want to speak on, in support of you, Vance. We'll call Ms. Nicole, is it Dakes? Oh, sorry. So Vance, thank you. We'll let Ms. Nicole up to the, to the podium, but we appreciate you coming in and interviewing in front of council. Thank you for being part of this process. I know we're not making it easy on people and that's intentional.
Well, I do, I do appreciate you giving it after and you come in, hopefully, and then in your future, I can be the guy that you pick to lead your department. Thank you, thank you.
Welcome, Nicole. Please come forward.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for letting me come. Thank you, Mr. Bonan, for the phone call yesterday. I appreciate it on your day off. The reason why I thought it was important for me to come here is because I am now a citizen of Broussard. I decided a year ago that I was going to bring my child, she's seven years old, to this community. I had looked in Youngsville, I looked in Broussard, I looked in Scott and Rain. I'm originally from that area in Rain. And of all the communities that I looked at, this was the one that I wanted to be in and that I wanted to raise my daughter. I'm not young, I'm fifty-two years old. I've been with the Lafayette Police Department for twenty-one years. It is a male-dominated profession and in that time, I've had some difficulties, but I've survived. With that being said, the reason why I'm here tonight to represent Vance is because I have a vested interest in this community and it, it is prosperous. The people here are wonderful. All my neighbors. It warms my heart to be able to go out and to actually have my daughter ride her bike and for me to meet good people and live next to good people. So I want that to continue. And so you guys have done a really good job up to this point. But I feel like I am now a part of this community and so I wanted you to hear my voice. I've worked with Vance for, like I said, twenty-one years, my entire career, not directly for him, with him whenever I was a younger officer on the road. He was a K nine officer, so I looked to him as a senior officer and he always gave good advice then, and he continues to do so today. Today, I'm in the Criminal Investigative Division. He is a lieutenant there, however, not my direct supervisor. There are many times whenever I'm on a call out that I do call him for advice and he gives very good sound advice. I do believe that Vance is, he possesses the qualities that we're all looking for to move our community and to heal the fractured police department that you have here, and it is fractured. And I think that he possesses the compassion to come in and to unite those officers and to bring them forward. And that's what we're looking for at this point. I know it's what I'm looking for as a law enforcement officer and as a citizen here. I don't have any jurisdiction here and I know this, so I have to look to our local police department to do the right thing and to keep us protected. I've seen Vance show that compassion. I've seen him interact out on the streets with the public. He does have what we're looking for. He does possess community-oriented policing skills. He leads up and he leads down. He leads from the front and that's what we're looking for. And so, yes, I am very vested in this and I do recommend him. I know you don't know me, but again, my heart is here and hopefully you'll see me in the future. Are there any questions for me? Thank you so much for allowing me to come and speak.
All right, so next I'd like to introduce Detective James Rogers with the Lafayette Sheriff's Department, who is our second candidate for interim police chief. Welcome, Detective Rogers. Please introduce yourself to the council.
I'm James Rogers. I've been a resident here in Broussard for almost thirteen years, twenty-seven and a half year law enforcement veteran. I started with the sheriff's office in Lafayette in ninety-three, worked my way through corrections and supervision there and onto patrol and into investigations, mainly juvenile investigations. Stayed there a few years, in two thousand and seven, I came here in Broussard. Came on as an investigator here, made rank of sergeant in the administration part of Broussard. Stayed here from two thousand and seven to two thousand and sixteen, where I left and went back to the sheriff's office, did much more time on patrol, ended up back up in investigations and juvenile, as a juvenile detective, since that's where my expertise was mostly at. Currently, I'm an investigator for the district attorney's office and basically my job is a, I'm a liaison between sheriff's office and all the outside agencies in the DA's office in Lafayette Parish, Vermillion and Acadia Parish. I deal with the DA's offices, the other law enforcement agencies and different parts of the community and those, those particular areas. And that's where I'm currently at right now. I have a wife and two kids here, well, wife and one kid. But my family's been here, I have family, my in-laws lived, were here previously for well over, almost forty years. So I have a big tie to root the Broussard area.
Well, we appreciate you being part of this process and, and thank you for that. Could you talk a little bit about improvements you think or changes you might make to the department to keep it advancing?
Specifically here, being with my, the integral knowledge I have of the internal workings of here, the main thing for this department that I know for a fact is stability. That's something that has sorely lacked for a number of years. We have to reassure these guys that they're doing an exceptional job right now and we have to keep pushing them towards that and challenging them to those hard times that they were going through. I know a lot of these guys here, they're excellent workers. I've been on the front lines with them. I've been pretty much in the mix with them, good and bad. The, the, the main, the main thing with them, the instability of the department has kept good people from staying and also keeping from recruiting them in the past. And I, one of my main goals would be to change that. I want this to be the best law enforcement agency in the state. But you can't, we can't only do that together and I know I need the officer's help as well as my own counsel and the citizens. So I, to me, that's what's most important, starting out right out of the gate.
James, at any one time during your career, how many people did you have to most manage?
With my current position, I've had, the most I've had, five, six, currently right now with this position I have at the DA's office, I'm pretty much managing a lot of, because a lot of them, they come to me for not just court questions, but supervisory type questions, dealing with cases, how to handle the victim, you know, victims on cases or suspects and whatnot. So the number fluctuates, but the most at any given time, I'd say six as investigations. In corrections, twenty, twenty-five people on a shift.
That's about the size of our department here.
Yeah, pretty much, yes.
Basic question, why do you want this job in the midst of what's going on here? What, basic question?
I, I feel that what I want to do is as a member of this community with my family living here, I want to bring back that trust in the, with law enforcement in the community. I want to be the guy going down, walking down the streets with my people, finding out the issues going on, finding out how can we help. I, I know we hear a lot about transparency and everything, well, it's important. You know, I believe we need to be transparent, not just with the council, but with the public, the officers here. We need to communicate better, you know, and I believe in that strongly and that's part of it that really attracted me to this opportunity. Especially since I spent almost ten years here before in a different set of circumstances. So I see some areas internally that I can just help enhance and maybe even add different ideas or some things that would help take these guys to the next level, which is the next level for the community.
I'm going to ask you the same question. What can you bring in the community for the youth?
Well, majority, majority of my investigative background is in juveniles. So that's any crimes involving juveniles, sexual crimes or whatever. I think with the schools, the schools, getting more involved in the schools. There are programs in school, there's sports and all these other kinds, but little things. Even like the awards programs that these schools put on at the end of every year. There's nothing wrong with attending that and being a part of it. I, I think the schools is the best place to start that. Kids have a lot of information regarding crime in the city. They know a lot. They don't just commit it all, a lot, they just, they know, they know a lot of information. And I think the schools is a great place to start.
Could you tell us about some professional accomplishments that you're proud of?
For me, I'm going to hit back on my, my biggest, I guess overall, my biggest accomplishment in general is my ability to adapt and excel at every position that I'm in. I have a great working relationship with everyone that I work with. But I guess my biggest accomplishment would be one of my cases that I, it was an almost thirty-year-old case that I was able to solve and get a confession on, that gave this woman who was an adult at the time, that she came forward, closure. And I've had many other cases like that, but it's hard to put any one specific because when you, you give these people closure, when something traumatic's happened to their family, it's kind of an indescribable feeling. And it's one of many, in my personal opinion, accolades that I kind of hold true to my heart.
Any experience in public relations, dealing with the public directly?
I've done a little. I haven't done any like P I O stuff. I've had to deal with public involving, the media involving cases. Limited here, when I was here, wasn't very much here, if any. I've been around a lot of friends that are public information officers. I've watched supervisors, how they handle, you know, I've learned, I've tried to emulate that whenever I deal with the media as well. I was never specifically assigned as a public information officer.
James, could you talk a little bit about your view on qualities of a good leader and what you think you can bring to help our officers in particular?
Qualities of a good leader, number one is communication. You got to get down on their level. You have to not be above them. You have to be willing to work with them. And whatever troubles they're having, you have to be able to walk through fire with them. I think it's important, they are, they are heard, you know, everyone, the public, the officers. I, I think the more you're communicating, the better you listen to your own officers, the better they'll be able to perform their job, which in turn will, they'll better serve the community. And that's, ultimately, I think that's what we're all in for anyway, is for the community, do what's best for them.
As a leader, do you think of, from a technology standpoint, do, do you have experience in that to keep the department kind of moving on the forefront and make sure that we wouldn't get left behind?
Yes, I, I do have some experience, again, with working cases, you have to, social media and all these other things, you have to keep up with Facebook, Snapchats and all these Instagram accounts. I see the importance of it. I'm not a big fan of them, but I understand the importance of them. We get a lot of good information from those programs as well.
Any experience with managing a budget?
Only experience I had when I was a part of the command staff here in Broussard. I did, when I was on the command staff, I was part of the budget meeting here, going over the capital outlay and whatnot, training budget as much as we could on that level.
Are there any other questions for Detective Rogers?
It's for both of y'all. Depending on who is picked as interim, do you plan on running for office after your interim, for reelection?
I do.
That's a good segue, Jeff. I want to, if you are appointed to interim, what are your thoughts on an assistant chief? Appointing or having an assistant chief during your interim phase?
My opinion, during the interim phase, that time needs to be allotted to assessing your department, what you, the needs here. I believe that that particular position needs to be just as thorough of a process as the one I'm going through right now. It's not to be taken lightly, though in my experience, that can make or break an agency. There are important, but it's also important to find the right personality and the right person with the right work ethic that can mesh good with your current staff. But for me, most importantly would be get the department stable, assess the needs, see what's most important, what needs to be done. And if there's an opportunity to bring in an assistant chief, in my opinion, I, I'd like to do the same thing I'm doing right now, but I'd also like to give the council input on it, just an opinion, if I have someone in mind. I, I don't, my mindset is to not just throw it on y'all at one meeting and say, hey, by the way, this is my new assistant chief. I don't want to do that. I want that person to get to know y'all individually and as a whole, but I want y'all's input. I think it's important because at the end of the day, it's all for the community. And the better I can serve them with good police work, the better y'all can serve them in doing y'all's jobs. And I, I think as a team, that is very important. But I wouldn't be too eager just yet. I would like to assess what I have before making that kind of decision. It's amazing, that would probably be my first major decision as an interim, if you, you know, if I would decide to go that route.
Vance?
I think it, it is important that you bring somebody in that has the same vision as you and going in the same direction. I think you need a supporter, that's going to, a strong supporter that's going to be, that have the same values as, as I have, right? And I believe that in the beginning, you probably needed, the first thing, I'll piggyback what James says, you really need to evaluate the department and the staffing in the department. And I, but I think, yes, I'd like to bring somebody in that helped lead and I think it's very important that we do that.
Questions for each one of y'all. Who is your mentor?
Who's my mentor? I'm going to tell you, my dad was my mentor. And the reason why I say that is because he was a twenty-five-year veteran of law enforcement. He was a state policeman, worked two jobs at one time and raised seven kids. That's a pretty, a pretty daunting task, you know, that he had to do. And then he taught great work ethic and he instilled it in, in all the boys. And I have a brother And he instilled it in, in all the boys. And I have a brother who's a police officer, my stepdaughter's a police officer, so it's an honorable career. You know, and he also gave back to the, the community as well, being in some of, he was with Carmelite Monastery, went to church almost every day. That was pretty impressive. And he was with Lions Club, so he gave back to the community as much as he got from the community.
Mine would be Craig Stansberry with Lafayette nine-one-one. Craig has pretty much been with me every step of the way with my career. Been very instrumental in helping me navigate through some tough times throughout this career. His experience, I mean, his experience speaks volumes on every level, but for me, for him professionally, even on a personal level. My family was not law enforcement. I'm the first one in my family in law enforcement. So with him, he was able to guide, coach me through a lot of things and give me a lot of great advice on a professional and even personal level. And to me, that's a very important thing for me.
Is there any further questions for Detective Rogers?
Well, thank y'all for your time. And should, should I be selected, y'all know the kind of person you're going to get. I'm trustworthy, loyal, I have integrity, and I'm one that's ready to work. My energy level's constantly high. But I'm willing to do the groundwork with every, with every one of y'all here in the offices as well.
Thank you very much for coming tonight and being a part of this process. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
So before we close our meeting, I'd like to just thank one other person in our audience tonight. We have Detective Ross Stevens from the Saint Martin Parish, Saint Martin Parish Sheriff's Office. Thank you. He was part of our five-person panel, helped us a tremendous amount and contributed heavily into us getting to this point. So thank you for that. Thank you for being here tonight. With that, we'll adjourn our meeting. Thank you all for coming tonight.